Good morning. This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners' Court. As we do all meetings, we will start with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. And today, those two pledges will be led by Ty Reiner and Jake Reiner that are here for a presentation a little bit after. So please rise for a moment of silence.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Public comment? If there's no objection from the court, I'd like to take one item for now out of order, which is a, under the present, under the resolutions and presentations of proclamations. This is item 4B, "Presentation by Cameron County 4H Youth and Development Committee Regarding the 4H Program Interpretation on Program Accomplishments and Future Plans."
Honorable Judge Coscos and County Commissioners, I'm Marco Fonsa, County Extension Agent for 4H here in Cameron County. And I'd like to introduce my coworkers.
I'm Roxy Salinas, the Cooperative Extension, Extension Agent through Prairie View A&amp;M University. We brought some 4H members here with us today.
My name is Ty Reiner, and I'm the Treasurer of the County 4H, and I'm also the Vice President of Highland Hustlers 4H Club.
And I, and I am Jake Reiner, and I am Parliamentarian of the Cameron County 4H, and I am Second Vice of Highland Hustlers 4H.
We'd also like to introduce Mrs. Stephanie Reiner. She's one of our 4H adult leaders, and she is also the mother of the two boys that are here, our 4H members.
Not the older sister.
Not the older sister. So with that, Judge, we're gonna go ahead and give a short presentation of some of the accomplishment, accomplishments that we've had for the past year. And with that, we'll go ahead and again introduce our 4H members to do that.
What is 4H? 4H is a community of young people across America who are learning leadership, citizenship, and life skills. 4H has about having fun, learning, exploring, and discovering. And 4H, young people make new friends, develop new skills, become leaders, and help shape their communities.
The 4H mission is to prepare youth to meet the challenges of childhood, adulthood, and adulthood through a coordinated, long-term, progressive series of educational experiences that enhance life skills and develop social, emotional, physical, and cognitive competencies. The 4H pledge.
I pledge my head to clear thinking, my heart to greater loyalty, my hands to larger service, and my health to better living, for my club, my community, my country, and my world.
Thank you all. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go over just a few facts and figures from our 4H program over the past year. 4H enrollment in Cameron County is 377. That's organized 4H clubs throughout the county, and that is up 10% from last year. Last year, we were close to about 330, 335 members throughout the county. So far up to date, we've reached 6,979 youth through 4H special interest, short-term programs. And those are basically one-time-shot programs where one of us agents or a volunteer will go into, let's say, a school and do an after-school program, and conduct a lesson, whether it be in aquatic science, or junior master gardeners, or things like that, or different project areas like that. School enrichment programs, we've so far up to date reached 925 youth. And school enrichment programs is what we call curriculum enrichment, where we'll go in and do a series of lessons, usually about five or six lessons, all focused on a particular subject or project area. So total, up to date, we've reached 8,281 youth in our schools and other after-school programs, and we are projected to reach anywhere close to 12,000 to 13,000 for the year, which is what we reached last year. So these are just up-to-date numbers so far. As far as volunteer enrollment, we have 128 total volunteers in our county 4H program. Like we, like we mentioned, we have one right here who's very active and very supportive of our program. These volunteers are the ones that serve as club managers and project leaders for our clubs, and without them, we would not have a 4H program. They are the backbone of the 4H program in this county and throughout the state. Total number of youth volunteers, we have 51, such as Ty and Jake here, who besides serving as 4H members, they also serve as youth volunteers. That means they can conduct trainings and other project opportunities for younger youth, or youth who are just entering the program. They are more experienced, along with their older 4H members, and they help support and give lessons to younger 4H members as youth volunteers. Total number of volunteers, that's 179 volunteers that we have in the county who support our 4H program. Just to talk about several actually accomplishments that we've had this past year, you know, just in the past six or seven months, it's been, it's been an incredible year for our 4H program. County participation, 175. What that means there is we've had that many 4H youth participate, let's say, in our county food show, our county fashion show, rifle contest, record books, district, I mean, county roundup, which is our public speaking competition, archery, you name it, photography, several different county contests. We've had approximately 175 youth participate at county-level contests that Roxy, Salinas, and myself coordinate and plan. District participation, 80 4H youth, and what that means is they had to have placed first at a county contest in order to advance to a district contest. We've had 80 participants participate at the district contests, which also are the same contests, rifle, archery, photography, food and nutrition, things like that. We've had approximately 21 youth advance to state contests. So they place first at county, they had to place first at district, and our district area encompasses 20 counties, south of San Antonio, down here to the Rio Grande Valley, including Laredo, Kingsville, and the surrounding areas. Total participation for county, district, and state contests is 276 participants, so really active participation. And right below that is really impressive state results. These are state contests that our 4H members have participated in. We had a first-place public speaking contest winner, and that was at, I think you're all's favorite place in College Station, there at Texas A&amp;M. First place, Share the Fun Choreographed Routine, that was a, it's almost like a talent-type contest. We had a 4H member do a dance routine, and she placed first. Again, you know, you have participants from throughout the whole state, and two Cameron County 4H members placed first in these contests. First place, Record Book Public Speaking, so that's, that's a big accomplishment there. Again, Record Book Contest is a very big contest. Second place, Science, Engineering, and Technology Poster Contest. Second place, Wildlife Habitat, Habitat Environmental Program, which is called the HWEP program. Fourth place, Swine Skeleton Team, and seventh place, Food Challenge Team, all at state contests. And this year, we were also happy and lucky enough to have a 4H member, Christine Knott, who got an $18,000 4H Foundation Scholarship that was sponsored from the Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo. So very, very good accomplishments that we're all very, very proud of our 4H members for. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to my coworker, Roxy Salinas, to continue.
Okay, so the Cooperative Extension Program started January 15th when I came in. It's sponsored by Prairie View A&amp;M University and USDA. Some of the programs that I've started off with is Takistan, which is an anti-bullying curriculum. It's one of the only anti-bullying curriculum that's out there for the state of Texas. So what I do is I go into the schools, I talk to the teachers. I've been doing teacher-in-service trainings to teach them, and then they teach the youth, and it gives a little bit of exposure of what 4H is all about. I do Winning with Nutrition. It's a sports nutrition curriculum that teaches kids how to make sports drinks that are in limited resource communities that maybe can't buy a Gatorade and stuff like that. I do Acres of Agriculture, which brings back, you do some little practice lessons with the kids to bring back what agriculture is all about. I do Junior Master Gardener, which is, helps the kids garden. And so through all my teacher-in-service trainings that I've done since January, I've trained about 78 teachers, which me, it's for this next school year, so the potential of kids is over thousands that we can have exposed to 4H. And so the youth that I've reached since then is 384, which totals out to 462. My upcoming program efforts is to create an advisory board for myself and do a Healthy Living Ambassador's Program, where I teach the kids the lessons, and they're the ones who go out and teach the kids, because kids really like to see kids teach the classes. So I'm doing that and recruiting in limited resource communities, because that's what this EEP program's all about. Some other things that we do is a lot of community service. These kids get up all the time and go and take clothes to needy families. And some of the little things that we do is Christmas holiday help, collecting clothing. The West Texas disaster, they took a bunch of supplies that the county got together, and they drove up there and took it to them. We did a Tractor Supply Emergency Prepartness Day a couple weeks ago, and we do Thanksgiving Holiday Help and Tim's Coats for 4H one day. We just wanted to come today to give you a little presentation on what 4H is about and what our accomplishes, accomplishments have been in the last, the last year. This is our current council officers. We have two of them with, here with us today. I want to thank you for having, taking some time out of court to, to hear our interpretation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jake. Marco, thank you very much. Roxy, thank you also. Jake Reiner, thank you very much as well for, for being here this morning. And it's always refreshing to listen to the good stuff that kids do versus the bad stuff that, that we read about every day. So thank you very much for, for being here. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge the presentation? Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Consent? Consent any items under consent any member of the court wish to take out and discuss separately? I've been asked to, to pull out item K by legal. On item Q, there's just an addition, adding Arnold Flores Jr. and Fermín Lial to the committee members for the RFP for the inmate phone system.
Right, so the committee will be Arnold, Fermín, myself, Javier B. Real, and Charles Hoskins.
And who else?
Charles Hoskins.
Okay. Any other item under consent?
Judge, can, can we, can we table item number 2N like in Nancy?
Item 2N to be tabled?
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve consent with the exception of item K that we will talk about separately, and then the items that have been asked to be tabled? Moved by Commissioners Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item K, consideration and approval to designate an e-signature authority. Delvia. Delvia. Oh, is that you? Morning.
The, Peter Pass had a handout. The State Health Department is transitioning to a paperless system. A few months ago, the State Health Department asked me to, to assign somebody to be the, what's known as the Contract System Administrator. I assigned Pedro Inojosa to do that. Basically, the Contract System Administrator is the person that's authorized to go into the system and allow other individuals to go into the system and to see different screens, such as financial or reports or whatever. So I'm gonna go ahead and hand this over to Pedro Inojosa, as he is the Contract System Administrator.
Judge, Commissioners, what you have in front of you is a flow chart of what's expected by the state in moving in the contract management system, procurement system. The idea was to have the system go live September 1st, 2013. Unfortunately, the state did send an email out in July. They're all holding back in getting the system fully functional. What they did do was set up the contract and amendments part to go live FY 2014. As you see, as you go across, grant applications will be hold off until FY 2015. Monthly reports, programmatic reports, and also the financial reporting will be hold off to FY 2015. If you look at the contract amendments, if you look down the box, it does identify the e-signature. What that is, is not necessarily having an electronic pad and physically cursive signing. Basically, it's a click of a button or a box on the screen. We are gonna have certain contracts that are gonna go on the e-signature, which is the PGP, which is the Program, Public Health Emergency Program, the Hospital Prepartness Program, Immunization, TB State, TB Federal, and the RLSS, which is Regional Local State Services. For the hard copy, we'll still remain doing the manual, bringing it to the court, getting the wet signatures. What the state is using is the WIC Program, Children's Special Care Needs, Title 5 Maternity, Child Health, and Family Planning. On the e-signature, if you look down, there's another box, which kind of goes through the process of what's expected of the person that's gonna be set up as the e-signature authority. The first step is the Texas Department of State Health Services will notify the e-signature authority via email that the contract is ready to be reviewed for approval. At that point, us as Cameron County will print out a version of the, of the contract to bring through court for approval, as we normally do. So that's gonna go through that process. At that point, once the court does approve, then the person that's assigned as the e-signature, or the, who will be the e-signature authority, would have to log into the system, the CNPS. At that point, locate the contract number. We'll have multiple within that screen. Once you log in, we have multiple contracts, as I specified on top. So you'll have to pick a contract, so you can basically go in and review contract for accuracy. It is the first time they're, they're going live with this system, just making sure that the contract that was uploaded, it is the correct contract and matches the contract number. Right after that, there are annually completed execution forms that need to be done for each contract. I did list all, all on there. I can go through them if you want. But basically, the ones that normally do hit are two of them, is the FATA, the Physical Federal Funding Accountability and Transparency Act, and also the other one is the lobbying certification. The other four that are on there, it depends on the type of contract. We might see the child support certification, we might see the family planning, abortion association. So it depends on the contract, it's which one you'll see. Right after that, then you would go back to the, the previous screen, and I guess the person that gets assigned will go through a training to identify this. They would go through that screen and then click on the actual contract that they'll be approving. And once they do that, then there's another box where you would actually just click on, and that would e-sign the contract itself. For execution on our part, then the SHS would be doing the same once they receive it. Somebody from the SHS would, you know, hit their side of the box and e-sign the contract, and then the e-signature authority would get a email back saying the contract has been executed. With that, we estimate that probably about maybe 20 minutes per contract that it would take the individual to go through, through that. Currently, the county judge is the only, I guess, authority that does sign on the contracts. With, with that, I did ask the auditor's office if there was any other, I guess currently, other contracts that other departments might be doing through e-signature. To their knowledge, no. This would be the first time, so that's what we have before you. On the agenda item, I had sent out the frequently asked questions, where it did give you some information as to if the authority currently, which is the judge, did not want to e-sign. He can either delegate that power to somebody else, or if the Commissioners' Court decided not to do electronic signature and wanted to do a wet signature, then they would take it a case-by-case, or would have to work with the state in trying to figure that out. I did talk to the state, and they did provide me that other counties are either setting up the county judge's office as the electronic authority, or the county manager for, for us would be the county administrator, or director of grants or county auditor. That's who they set up so far. With that, that's what I guess legal had asked as part of it, is who has been assigned in other counties? I'll open it up for any questions that you all might have.
Can you have more than, you can have several designees, can't you?
Correct.
That can sign?
Yes.
You can't?
We can have multiple e-signatures. It's only gonna take one to actually-
That's correct.
-approve the contract.
If there's no objection from the court, would you like to authorize the county administrator to also authorize him to sign, or would you like to add somebody else aside from me?
I think you should add a designee, because sometimes he's gonna be out of town.
Correct. Anybody else. We can add, we can add several, correct?
Correct.
And maybe go down whomever is available, whoever is gonna sign.
Well, can we assign county administrator, and then later on, when the rest of the court is here, if they have somebody else?
Well, we don't even have to do that today, do we?
I need to set up the role within the system, so we can get the FY 2014 renewals for the grants that are on the e-signature side.
But can you come back and delete or add an e-signature? Can it be done at any time during the year?
As the system administrator, I can go in and delete.
Okay. All right. Well, for now, is, go ahead and let's add Mr. Pizza Pulvera to, to that list, aside from me.
So yourself and Pete on?
Correct.
Okay.
And then later on, we want to add somebody else. We can do that. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Thank you. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge in, with, with the change of adding Pizza Pulvera to the e-signature line?
Some of.
By Commissioner Benavides, and by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary, oh, on the, that's correct, amendments.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. You had the budget amendments placed in front of you, and a lot of these are used general operational. The PO cutoff is August the 15th, so there will be, these are the amendments that are being presented. We have budget amendments for the county judge, the county clerk, emergency management, reproduction, district courts, the DAs, the treasurers, Constable Precinct 2, Constable Precinct 4, Sheriff's Department, juvenile probation, public works, and then from there on, they are special revenue grants. And we also have their, some that are coming, they're being presented for the Veterans Bridge, Los Indios, and Gateway Bridge, DA drug forfeiture, the Park Rangers, and the Beach Safety Program, customary and operational. And the one for road and bridge, that one should be, the line item that is being increased should be to 6096 on the equipment, and that's $12,054. So that is all, they're all within budget for your approval. You also have salary schedules for the juvenile department, and there is also one that is for the tax office, for the auto theft division. That grant starts on September the 1st, for your approval.
Some of.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Claims?
Claims, I have warrants number 306033 through 306221, 306223 through 306257, 306263 through 306389. Payroll for $1,642,064.74. Healthcare-related claims for $219,726.64. I have a void warrant number 304538 for $160. That is being voided. We are pending settlement on a, on a expense claim that was, funds were advanced to this individual, and we're pending settlement of that, of that claim. So we will be reissuing that check once the expense claim form is turned in, and all the travel items are accounted for. I also need to read in a manual for $8,500. That is a claim for South Texas Asset Consortium, which the court approved participation in back in, I believe it was in May, and we need to process that check. But however, we need approval of the budget amendment, so that we can pay the claim. For your consideration.
Some moves.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides, to approve claims as presented. Please note my abstention on the affidavit I'm gonna provide.
Judge, Commissioners, real quick, on that invoice, Martha just read into the record. Cameron County was one of five pilot projects across the United States that was selected by DHS, and what that'll do is, that'll give us the ability to upfront overtime money to CBP, so that they can have the necessary resources to man all primary, secondary lanes for passenger vehicle, pedestrian, and commercial vehicles. The county will get reimbursed at a later date. Ideally, what, what I'd like to do is during peak seasons, for example, Christmas, Easter, get with customs, and then we'll have to fund that, that overtime. But that will, that will allow customs to man all the lanes and have a much smoother flow of traffic, and hopefully not have the two, three-hour waiting times that we've had in the past. So I think that's, that's huge benefit to the county, puts us in a position to, to be able to provide better service to the bridge users. In the future, Senator Cornyn has introduced legislation that will allow us to upfront funds for infrastructure projects, and then get reimbursed at a later date. We, we have a project in mind already that we have started working on, which is, at the Veterans Bridge, mirror the four lanes that we have for primary inspection for primary vehicles, go from four lanes to eight lanes. And the way the secondary was set up 12 years ago, is that when we do the other four lanes, all eight will feed into the secondary. So everything is ready. Just need the infrastructure for the other four lanes.
Thank you, Pete. Anything else?
And, and just to confirm, that manual that was read in, as soon as the check is run, it is being requested that it be released?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Minutes of the 5th and the 18th of July, those ready?
Some moves.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides, to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item D, deliberation, possible approval of proposed memorandum of agreement with the Texas General Land Office regarding terms and conditions of temporary beach access restrictions and foreclosure to dis- space launch and spaceflight activities.
Judge, we have an executive session on that.
Okay, but my understanding is we don't need to do that.
Yeah, I think the court, you have in front of you the order that was drafted by Bruce, and then the MOA that Bruce and, and Special Counsel Jim Allison has been working on for, for a couple of months now.
This is the one that we discussed when, when they, when we were in the office, made some minor changes. This is ready to go.
Right.
Okay.
Move to approve.
I'll second that. We need to do this and get it done.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item E, discussion and possible action regarding uncollected fines at the magistrate courts. Judge?
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have several, I believe, thousand citations that are, have been issued from our court for the last few years. We have been without an officer to collect those fines. And it's my understanding there's some significant amount of money owed. And so I know the judge that you and I visited a little bit about what we could do to rectify that situation, and I needed some guidance from you all as to how you all wanted us to handle it. My suggestion at this point would be that we would contact the firm that's handling the collections for the county to see if, what use or help they could be to us in that regard. We have talked to the county clerk's office, and they're helping us start collecting fines now. But these are fines that are in the past, and they are not in a position to be able to help us with that.
Martha, who are we using right now? We're using Linebarger Firm to collect, and this coming from, from the, from the JP offices?
Yes.
Okay, is there any-
First, they go through the county clerk, and then-
Any reason why we cannot add the, the magistrates' offices to that collection effort?
Civil, I believe the agreement is with Cameron County. Is that correct? So they should be able to. So they should be able to be picked up.
Okay. All right. Do you want to work then with the auditor's office, or with, with the, with the county clerk, and get that going?
I, I will, Judge, and, and we'd also like permission to get the constables to try to help us with any of these fines as well, to the extent that they can.
Well, the constable is asking for some, some additional folks, and, you know, they might be, if they get them, subject to the budget, help you with that.
Right. I, I just want permission to be able to speak with them, if they can help us.
Yeah, you can do that.
If they can't, and.
Okay, there you go. If you get the spots.
Well, that's between you and them, but as long as we can talk to them about it.
All right. Okay. Well, at least for now, Judge, speak to the county clerk, and go ahead and just enter into, you know, talks with, with the constable, and we'll take it from there. Joe?
Judge, we already had a couple of meetings with the magistrates, and we can just add them on to the, to the list of people to collect for.
That's true.
All right. Thank you. But, well, let me ask you, just go back, then, what do you, the constables for, if you're working through Joe, do they, are you working with the local constables?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're already working with the precinct two constables on some of this stuff?
Yes.
And you don't need the folks, right?
Joe, let me, let me ask you a question while you're up there. Speaking of the constable, because I know you probably work with them on a daily basis. We were talking, we've been talking about reallocating the constables, and make sure we have enough constables, especially here, because of the judges, since they're here, they can listen to this, about sometimes when their bailiffs are out, the security people have to cover, which is fine, which, the way it should be, and when there's multiple prisoners, some of the security people are used to help with the extra prisoners, when there's an overload, when they're all in session, which brings people in from the streets, that would normally be serving warrants, and, you know, for his office, or for the JPs, or whatever. I think my concern, my concern is, do we have enough people at the courthouse now to actually cover when we have shortages? And it seems to be pretty, that happens a lot, and we're having to pull people from the streets, and not, and not be able to serve, which is revenue to the county. How do you feel about that, Joe? Is there enough people? When you need somebody, are they available, or they, do you have to wait?
Well, we, we've already tried having a, a, a bailiff in our department, and all six of them that we've had, they want to be white-herbs, you know, they want to be out chasing criminals and what have you, because going to find people, to pay fines is not very exciting. So most of the time, they, they just stay there a couple of months, and look for a job in the sheriff's department, or with the constable. So I'd rather they stay with the constable, or the sheriff's department, and see if we can get them to go out and, and do the finding of these people.
The judges, do you ever have trouble making sure you have coverage for your, for your courts and the, and the prisoners? Can anybody answer that? Judge?
[inaudible].
Yeah. Is it because there's not enough constables in the building at the time, or?
[inaudible].
Mm-hmm.
And we have 10, 12 prisoners.
The reason? Sure. So what, I guess the reason is, one of my concerns, that I'm trying to bring to the court, is that we have enough constables allocated to the courthouse, to make sure that we can handle the warrants for everybody, and, you know, cover the, cover what your needs, and, and the security.
[inaudible].
Okay.
They have not been available, they're helping to, the [inaudible]. They're, they're helping in major [inaudible].
Okay.
The fact that one of our bailiffs is out of [inaudible] for some reason, then he has to provide some.
There's no doubt, it happens, we all, we all have bailiffs that are going to be sick, yeah.
So we can extend it. [inaudible].
The judge, the reason I bring this up, because you have the five constables, yet you don't have five equal precincts, because the workload in precinct two is so heavy, that it has to, yes, I think it needs special consideration, to make sure we're covered. What's that?
[inaudible].
Well, that's coming, that's coming online, hopefully in the next six months, or as soon as we can find space for.
[inaudible].
Yeah, so, that's true.
Well, I think that, I think you're right. But, but every, every constable's office has undertaken different law enforcement duties, whether it's patrolling, or, or civil process, and so we'd have to look at those, you know what, we're not going to do it. I mean, I think we need to look at it right now, we're in the middle of the budget, and it's going to be a tight budget as it is, and, and we're talking about adding more constables. I'm not saying that the need isn't there, the need is there, but do we shift them from other offices to accommodate this one? And how do you, how do you determine how many deputy constables are enough for, for each precinct? I mean, is that, you know, how do you, how do you make that call? You just can't arbitrarily say, well, this one needs three or four, and, because I've got, you know, Constable Diaz here, and, and in learning what he was doing this past couple of days ago from his dad, I mean, these guys are going door to door in the evenings, putting, you know, little cards, saying, hey, we, almost like Mayberry, you know, you're kind of checking all the doors, and all the businesses, see if they're, you know, that's something that normally is not done by, by a constable, or even, or even a deputy sheriff, you know, to do that. So every constable has what they believe is, what they want to be doing for their precinct, but there's no doubt that the, the constable from precinct two needs additional staff, but you start equating it to what other constables do, then you'd have to make sure that every constable was doing the similar type of duty. You know, just civil process, or warrants, or whatever it is. So if, if y'all want to address it during this budget, then, you know, you add it to the list, like, like we've done everything else, and see where the numbers are going to fall.
Last year, we had a meeting with the constables and the, and the JPs, and we talked about the necessity to serve more warrants, which we had such a backlog of money out of the county that was uncollected. I think our collection rate was eight percent for the, you know, ridiculously low. And we said that we would come back this year, meet with them again, and see which JPs are issuing warrants, what, how many warrants the constables are serving, and then we would talk about it at that point in time.
Well, we're.
That was, that was.
Well, we're here now.
That was agreed upon, uh, last year.
Yeah. But, but next year, but next year is today.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm saying, I, not, not all the JPs are here, maybe some of the constables are here, but the next, for next meeting, we need to bring them all in, and have this discussion.
Well, then, we're going to have to set aside one morning to discuss that, and, you know, the JPs aren't here, because I don't believe they were aware that they needed to be here. The constables are here probably, because they're, they may be asking for some, for some help in, in their precinct. I mean, I don't disagree with you, but we've had meetings before, and at the end of the day, no one wants to really do what we talk about doing, just like, well, okay, let's, we don't want to upset anybody. So just leave it the way it is till next year. Then next year comes, and, so, that's what we're doing. Yes, sir.
Just to, uh, talk about, a little bit about the warrants and whatnot. I have a great relationship with Constable Diaz, and he's a, he's assigned a warrant officer to my court. Last month, last year, 2012, I believe, my court, or that court, they collected about $40,000. This year, same month, we collected $60,000, and have us, and have assessed another $20,000. You're looking at about $80,000.
Yeah, you guys, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling that we're getting out of our swimming lane here. Let's go back to the magistrate issue. We can talk about that issue when it comes to the more generalized one, when it talks about the budget, and that's the very next item. So if you can, let's hold off on that one, let's get done with the magistrate issue, and then, and you don't have to go very far, okay?
Yeah.
So let's do that. On the, let me, let me just hear a motion to acknowledge.
Some moves.
Judge Cordova's recommendation, and to proceed along with the terms as we discussed, by Commissioner Hernandez, saying by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, sign by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item F, discussion and possible action regarding the fiscal year 2013, 2014 budget. Let's start off where we ended last time, with the, that overage that you had of $380,000, okay? And then you gave us a new one yesterday, that, that number changed, and I guess I couldn't follow what new positions were added in there, because there was also a difference in the, in the transfers in, of a little bit.
Correct. I need to pass something out, real quick.
Is this the new one?
No, this is actually just backup material for part of the discussion.
I guess, have you had the main thing that, that I would like, well, it answers it here. No, it does not. The, the real thing that I want to see is, is, just so I know, from the last time, from the 8-8 meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where you start off with an overage slash shortage, and we're going to use the, giving the raises of $1,000 for now, what we're going to do, we'll, we'll go with that one, that may change, though, after all this.
Okay.
Of $380,164.
Correct.
That was the 8-8, okay? Now, the one that I recently got was 260,233.
Correct.
So I just want to know what.
Well, i-if you recall.
Yeah, I know that.
Last week, we were talking, there was, there's a, a few things that happened. As part of the discussion, I, I told you the court that the, the expenditures at that time weren't 100% finalized because of the turds, that the values.
Is that, is that the good number now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that, that's as of the last information that we got, and so we're going with that.
Okay, but tell me, because I think, okay, is that the only thing that's in there?
No.
Or, or have you added some positions that we kind of agreed to the last time?
Correct.
Which positions were those?
Uh, there was two positions for the county clerk's office.
Okay, and that was $69,844?
Um, well, I already included them, so I don't have.
Okay, well, I guess, just tell me which ones are in there then.
Okay, it was the two for the, for the county clerks, there was one for the veterans' office, one clerk, and then for the elections was.
Well, hold on. Did you add extra help for the magistrate?
Yes.
Okay. What else?
For the elections office, they were asking for it to be shifted, the court directed it to split it half, and so half of that position is within the general fund.
Right.
Those are the positions that have been added.
But I thought we'd also agreed, I don't, if I remember, was the environmental health?
No, y'all didn't decide on that.
We did not agree to the environmental health, I thought we did, okay.
Not, not last week.
All right.
And you did not decide anything on the constable, or the sheriff's department?
Okay. We didn't include anything, either on the, on your request for three people either?
Correct.
Okay. So the only one was in there was two for the county clerk, one for the veterans, one for the magistrate, and one half for the elections.
Correct. And for the magistrate, it was just extra help money.
Correct, extra help. And then that brings us to the $260,000, 233.
Correct.
Okay, got it. All right, now go.
So, the, the revenues are finalized, are, you know, based on the certified values, the expenditures include those positions, we backed out the contractual amount for the housing of inmates, as directed by the court, we put the overtime in, in the jail back to $423,000, because we had bumped it up to half a million dollars, and so that's the effect of all of those things. There's a, the remaining, assuming, on the left-hand column, the $1,000 across-the-board increase.
So the $260,000 overage, you're showing how much, how much are you allocating for jail overtime in there?
$423,000. That's, that's what's there this fiscal year.
Okay, oh, yeah, but that doesn't, that does not include the $93,000.
Correct.
That you had originally back over here.
Correct.
Nor the $343,000 to jail inmates.
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
The right-hand column, the only difference between those two is, if the court were to approve a $750 across-the-board increase for employees, that's the only difference between those two columns.
Okay. Now, even though we, we approved the, the $1,000 increase to the employees, this is not binding until we adopt the budget, till we vote on it.
Correct.
So this is just speculation, in terms of what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, and see if we can get these numbers to match.
Correct.
Correct? So we haven't taken an official vote on anything.
Other than the adding of the positions.
Other than to hear, just, you know, add, add, add.
Let me ask you a question, real quick. This number that we have right now includes everything from last year to right now.
Yes.
Nothing's been adjusted.
Plus the new positions.
Yeah, plus, nothing's been changed.
But it does include the new positions.
The salaries are all the same, with these numbers right now, right? Nothing's been taken out or in.
Correct. Yeah. Based on any actions that may have taken place during this fiscal year, of course, there was positions and what have you, correct.
Yeah, but nothing, nothing's been, nothing's been adjusted up or down, in any way she have performed, that you know of.
Well.
Except by the individual departments.
Operational expenses, there were both increases and decreases, and I had presented that back last month.
I agree.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay. What I also passed out, well, let me finish with this one first, I guess. The, the second page was the new positions that were still pending requests. On the page after that, this is the salary increase request. Couple of meetings ago, I, I asked the court if they were going to consider exceptional salary increases, because there was, the page was actually like, it was actually three pages long, you had said no at that time, so I eliminated most of the stuff that was on that page. What's remaining here, I spoke about this last week, the elections office, in total, it's, it's a net effect of zero, and they're, so they're asking to reallocate funds within their own budget, within their department. That's there, I believe Mr. Davis is here, if y'all have questions about that, or you want to talk about that. Below that are the requests by the DA's office and the sheriff's office, on the request of transferring, or for the general fund to pick up the, the supplements that are currently be paid out of Fund 900, what that would cost, that's there. I had forgot to mention, the maintenance department had requested for the Los Fresnos Building, currently has a part-time individual, and they were requesting to bump it up to a full-time individual. The district courts requests, or the district judges' requests, that's all general fund. Below that is the bail bond board fund, and we can talk that, about that after we finish the, the general fund. There was a request for a $1,500 supplement for an employee in the treasurer's office, and then road and bridge fund, there's a request to also reallocate funds within the different departments under public works, and reclassify a position. That strictly has to do with road and bridge, and it's, it's a net zero.
So, Javier, let me see if I understand this correctly. These, these are already in the budget, so they would be budget neutral, is that what you're saying?
For elections, and for what Public Works is asking to do, yes.
I guess what that means is, just so, just so I understand it, you've got some departments, more specifically, the elections, and then let's talk about general fund, because road and bridge, I think, can handle its own, but, on the general fund, you're having, because we've done it before, we, other elected officials, new ones have come in, and they, they've reallocated, they've rearranged their, they've reallocated salaries within their departments. As long as it was budget neutral, historically, the court has passed it.
Correct.
Is that correct? I don't recall at any time where the court, as a whole, has voted against it, if it was budget neutral. With the elections office, that's what they're doing. They're, they're rearranging, we have a new EA, and he is reallocating based on what he has seen since he's been on board. I imagine that, that's why, that's why Chris is doing it. You may, Chris, I'm not, I don't want to speak for you, you may want to come up and, and go to bat for your, for your, for your recommendation. So those items, Commissioner, those are, those, as I see, they're, they're budget neutral. Now, with, now with the DA and the sheriff are asking for, those are not budget neutral, because those, those would add, what, $300,000 to the general fund, which, you know.
Correct.
Unless, unless you all know something that, that we don't, it'd be very, very difficult to do.
Morning Judge Commissioners, huh? Yeah, real quick, you're correct Judge, it's budget neutral, it's a reallocation, it's a reallocation that we're taking from a vacant position, which was my administrative secretary. It is vacant and was vacant with, uh...
Are you gonna keep it, are you gonna keep it vacant?
No sir, I intend to fill it with a lower salary.
Okay.
And taking that amount and allocating it based on the performance that I've seen with my existing staff.
Okay, and again, just, the court has done that in the past where it was budget neutral. I, I don't have any issue with reallocating within the budget, I mean, that's, I think that's at the discretion of the, of the department head or elected official to do that. But I, and it's good that you do it at the beginning of the year, so they don't go through it, you know, every year, I mean, every budget amendment, they make your reallocation, so I don't have any issue with that. Do y'all have a problem with that? Hello?
I think, I think our biggest concern is, and I've asked, I've asked you before, or we've talked about it before, about doing this during the fiscal year.
That's why you do it now.
It gets very confusing.
Yeah, it does.
You know, we're doing it now.
That's why you do it now.
It's happened all year.
Correct.
We've approved a bunch of these, and I asked, I mean, I asked you for a list...
Actually, I just passed it out.
Okay, you just passed it out?
Yeah, that was gonna, yeah, get to that. The one that I just handed out?
Yeah.
Did I get it?
I'll find it. Anyway, I guess that's my concern, should we allow it, should we continue to allow it? Because it's very confusing.
Right.
Have they been, have they been reclassified? Have they been given a promotion? Is it a new mandate from the state that requires more paperwork, so we're gonna give them a raise? I mean, this happens once a month. It's, to me, I, it's real hard to keep up with who, you know, who's on first, and who's got what, you know, during the whole fiscal year. Normally, and you're right Judge, we just basically pass them on and give the discretion to the elected officials to do that, but at the end of the year, when we talk about giving everybody a raise, well, you know, do we give it, is it a blanket raise for everybody? Or do we, do we exclude those people?
You know, it's, Commissioner, it's a policy decision that, that we make, and as we all know, policies are only as good as three votes up here. And I think that if we wanna determine the policy and set the policy that there will be no budget amendments as it comes to salary increases during the year, with the exception of those employees that maybe come in on a probationary period, they've passed probation, and then they can move up to the slot. But that's gonna be something that we're gonna have to decide, and again, we talk about it, and then it comes, and we pass it, and off we go, then we're talking about it here. I have no, I have no problem with passing a policy, once you get a full complement of court, of the court members that are here, to, to make that as a policy and just, but again, policies are meant to be broken every now and then. So, whatever y'all wanna do on this one, I think that if anybody's coming to us right now, elected officials or department heads, and they wanna make some salary adjustments because of, and they have to justify, just like Mr. Davis justified it right now, now is the time to do it and not do it during the year.
And I guess the question that I have is that, okay, so if these people are gonna get a, an increase, and I would imagine they're effective immediately once we approve it?
Effective October first.
October first.
It would be October first.
Correct.
So along with that, would also go the additional thousand dollars?
That's, that's the question.
I wouldn't, I mean, you know, if they're, if they're already getting the raise by these adjustments, then why, why provide the thousand dollars? Chris? I mean, I don't know what your plan was, but...
Some are in my department with the allocation, some are not with this allocation, so how do you want to...
Are you factoring in, let me ask you, are you factoring in the thousand-dollar raise in here already?
No sir, I am not.
Okay.
No sir.
Well, that's something that we discussed, I mean, I, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, 'cause you have...
What y'all wanna do?
You have, what, three individuals where the increase would only be two hundred and fifty dollars, and so do you give...
What you, well, what you could do, yeah.
The seven fifty to get them to the thousand?
What you could do is, is do it to where you go up to the thousand, and not give them a thousand on top of it, you give, you take them up to the thousand. If someone is gonna get a twenty-five-hundred dollar increase, wouldn't make any sense to give them another thousand dollars on top of that.
And then one issue that the court, the Commissioners Court is going to have, is that some of these people in most departments have received this increase and have received a small supplement, because they have assumed additional duties, and that is what you will hear from the departments. It is not just a bump, rather, it is a justification for this increase.
Oh yeah, we hear it all the time, sure.
Yeah. And so, on what I just handed out, if you look at the second page, starting on the second page, those are all the positions that this fiscal year, up to when this was run, which was last week, who had received an increase within the general fund. And so, you have the DA's office, the jail, the infirmary, Constable Precinct Three, a majority of them are the juvenile department, purchasing, and then trial protective, legal. There are some in here that are less than the thousand dollars, and I want to, I guess, clarify or quantify that the positions with the DA's office, I need to actually look at, because I know for sure one of them, and possibly a couple of more, the individual didn't technically receive an increase, it's just it was shifted over from Fund 900 to the, to the general fund. So the general fund shows an increase, but total salary stayed the same. So those I need to, to double-check. And so, um, let me see.
You know, we're really gonna picket this, I think that...
I mean, I, yeah.
I mean, you know, we need to decide.
It was just a question, Judge.
No, and I, and I think it's a good, no, no, I'm not, not about that, I think that's a good question, but we need to decide for those people...
Yeah, 'cause we need to know what to do.
Yeah, but you need to know, for those that have received a thousand dollars or more during the year through budget amendments, as you talked about, do they get the thousand-dollar raise? That's, that's the question. If the answer's no, let's move on, then it's a moot point, he can't, he quits wasting his time. You say you wanna look at it, but then you do one, you gotta do them all. You just can't, you know...
Right.
So you have to do them all, so, what is it that y'all would like to do since we're in this argument?
Not a lot, I mean, you know, we would have the discussion.
Okay, well, but I'm talking about right now.
Going forward, going forward.
Right now. So leave it alone and get...
I would like to see the whole court, I mean, this is not a budget, I would like to see the whole court look at it.
Yeah, and we're not gonna vote on anything. Yeah, yeah, we're not, I mean, I know why the, all the judges are here, and thank you for being here, I wish you'd come more often to visit us, but we're not gonna be voting today on any compensations up or down on, as it relates to, you know, to the judiciary. I think there's, there's a, what I'm hearing and sensing is that they want everybody to be here, and Commissioner Garza is not gonna be here till the first meeting in September. So that is probably in all likelihood when all this will be voted upon and decided. So if y'all wanna make your comments now, you can, but it, you know, people have short memories in three weeks. So it's up to you, all you wanna do it now, or come back and do it, there's nothing to be decided today.
I guess since we're lawyers, we'll do it now and then, if you'll allow us to. Anyway, good morning, County Judge, members of the commission. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to address you. I'm Elia Cornejo Lopez, Judge of the Fourth Fourth District Court. This year, the state legislature and Governor Perry amended the Texas Government Code, which allows the Cameron County to increase its supplement that it pays the district judges. This year, you have awarded a thousand dollars to all employees, and since we're no longer capped, we feel that we should be included in the a thousand dollars that you have awarded to all employees, including the elected officials, as there's no justification to leave us out and treat us as a different group. Having said that, then there's an additional two thousand that we seek from you based on the fact that the ceiling on that supplement has increased from fifteen thousand to eighteen thousand. The additional two thousand, we believe, should be awarded to us because it's been eight years since we have received or had any opportunity to receive a raise from Cameron County. In two thousand and five, the Texas State Legislature amended the statute, and you all complied with the ceiling, took us to the maximum ceiling, and it's been eight years. Within the, those past eight years, this court very generously has awarded a three percent increase to the employees. A few years ago, you gave a thousand dollars, not including the one you're giving this fiscal year, and then you also gave, the following year or two years later, a five hundred dollar increase to all employees. The district judges did not receive that, because we were at our maximum cap that you could supplement the district judges. So, if you give us the addition, the a thousand for this year, and the additional two that we are seeking from you, then we will be at our ceiling. Any future raises that you give in the next eight to ten years, we will not be able to receive those, because we will be at the maximum contribution that Cameron County can provide to us under that supplement and under the Texas Government Code. So you're actually making up for the past eight years, and providing to us for the future eight to ten years that will be kept at the maximum supplement of eighteen thousand. Those eighteen thousand are made up, five thousand four hundred from the juvenile board, and nine thousand six hundred from the general fund. We're asking you to increase the portion from the general fund from nine thousand six hundred to twelve thousand six hundred. That has been budgeted for you on page three, where you see eight district judges with a total impact of twenty-four thousand dollars. However, the two thousand, eight times two is sixteen, because the other a thousand you're already giving to all the employees. The justification for providing the supplement, and what the legislature had in mind, is that judges engage in extrajudicial activities and responsibilities. For example, we serve on the adult probation board, we serve on the bail bonds board, we supervise the auditor's office. Miguelia Lopez and Commissioner Sofia Benavides have been working two years, nonstop, on the computer program and Odyssey, and bringing that into compliance. I know Judge Sanchez has been working on the construction, making sure that whatever we build is, works for the courts. And so, we spend a lot of time with extrajudicial activities that we provide to Cameron County, and based on those duties, coming to this court for sixteen years, a compensation of two thousand dollars, we feel is very fair. So we're asking, when you do take the vote, that you vote that the district judges be awarded twelve thousand six hundred in compensation from the general fund, which is the a thousand-dollar increase plus two thousand additional. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you Judge, I don't have any questions, I just do have some comments. One, we have not awarded any raises to anybody. That's why I preface my comments by saying that, right now, we're just working with the numbers to see if we can. I also said that, you know, our, our goal is to provide a thousand dollars, but that's not done yet, so we haven't awarded anybody anything at this point. Waiting for ten years for the legislator, legislature to act is also not accurate, they could, they could act in two years and give another ten thousand dollar raise to district judges, because it does kind of aid in their, in their retirement benefit at all. I spoke to some, to some state legislators, and maybe some of the chairman that voted against this raise, whether it is or it isn't, but I think the, the concern that, that I have is not, is not so much what we need to do for the district judges, is that coupled with that, because of the state law, it, it kind of brings in the county courts-at-law judges as well. So although the three thousand dollar stipend in addition that the, that the legislature said we could go is, is minimal, what we have to do for you, we have to do for the county courts-at-law times three. So, all of a sudden, the fifteen thousand dollars that was awarded by the, or voted on by the state legislature, even though it has no impact on the county, because they're paying for it, it does impact us directly, because we have to match that to an order to compensate the county courts-at-law. And that's not really your, your argument, I mean, that's just, you know, but we have an opportunity to, if we can, to, to control that little bit in terms of the compensation. And then there's no doubt that you all work hard, and you deserve it, like every employee that, that works for the county deserves it. To be exact, the raises were, if we give a thousand dollars today, it was five hundred last year, three years before was zero, and then the year before that was, was a thousand. So, and prior to that, the three or four percent, as I know, if I remember, but I wasn't here at that time. So, you know, there's, there's never enough money that we can pay employees, and I, I understand that. So, you know, again, the, the thousand dollars that we're talking about, you got, you got a line of people that are lined up right behind you, that are gonna be coming and asking and justifying why they need either increases in compensation, which I don't think they're gonna be asking for, but at least for personnel. And so, we have a limited number, and, you know, if I have, I as one, have an opportunity to mitigate it and save it somewhere, I'm gonna try to do that. It's not personal, it's all fiscal to me. And, and whether the added duties, and, you know, everybody works hard, everybody does that, but that's the role that we choose to run, and when we run, that's a role that we wanna do, we're willing to do it, we wanna work hard and do that. So, you know, these discussions, I'm sure, I don't want them to get, you know, violent or critical or anything, it's just, you know, I'm, I'm gonna vote what I think is in the best interest of, of everyone, and, and I may upset some people, and may make some other people happy, and I think that's what we all try to do. But again, I, I don't want, I as one, don't want to bring this to a vote until we have, I don't know where Commissioner Sanchez is today, I know the Commissioner Garza's out of town, but, but I'd like to have a full court here, so that everybody shares in the, in the, in the discussion. So, having said that, that's all I got.
Judge, I, I would like to say at this point that while we want to save money and whatnot, I don't see it fair that we would take away from the district judges the supplement in its total that they've been getting for, since two thousand and five. I find that, that we should not do that. That's my personal opinion. This court may decide to, to take it away, I don't know, that's why I wanted it discussed when all the court members are here. But, I, I was confused, okay, about the fifty, the, yeah, the fifteen thousand and the eighteen thousand. I think the intent of the legislature was to give the district judges a fifteen thousand dollar raise. We have nothing to do with that, that was their, their decision, okay? And for us to go in and take away from them what they're already making, I think the issue that we should be discussing here is the three thousand dollar raise, not the fifteen thousand supplement that they already have. So, having said that, I guess we'll wait until the rest of the court is here.
Yeah, let's wait. The, but let, let, just let me throw this out to you. How did, how did, how do we not know that the legislature didn't intend to reduce the burden on county government by providing the fifteen thousand and helping us save some money there?
Because under case law, Judge, when the legislature intends something, they actually say it, and they write it down, so that there's no interpretation, because we don't wanna be guessing what the legislature intended. If they wanted the, the counties to reduce your supplement, they would not have raised the amount that you can increase to us from fifteen thousand to eighteen thousand. So if their intention was for you to pay us less, they would have reduced the ceiling from fifteen thousand to ten thousand.
Yeah, well, I seriously doubt...
But, but with them, what you can interpret by them raising the ceiling, is that they actually intended for you all to give us an additional three thousand.
Well, then they, they could have made it mandatory, as an, as another unfunded mandate, and I disagree that, that the legislature always passes what it intends, or else you wouldn't have people going back and rewriting the bill, because something was not foreseen. And I, I spoke to the, to some of the state reps and the chairman, and, and he, he has the same dilemma with the county courts-at-law. But I look at it the other way, their, their intent may have been to reduce the burden on, on county government, and say, you know, we're gonna save county government that amount of money on the supplement. The supplement is that, and I'm not gonna get into a debate with anybody, but it is an option at our discretion, it's not an entitlement, it's an option at the end of the day, rightly or wrongly or deservingly, the county courts-at-law and the district judges, if, if everything stays the same, and we follow the mandate that, on that, they're gay, they could potentially get an eighteen thousand dollar raise. And I'm not saying they don't deserve it, I'm just saying that when you look at the, the general raises that everybody else has gotten over the years, I would venture to say that even if you accumulate the raises from two thousand and five to your rank and file, nobody's received an eighteen thousand dollar raise in that amount of time. But, you know, we can save that discussion for, for another day, and, and I would appreciate that my other, my colleagues are here the next time to see where this thing is gonna go.
Sure, I understand that. And, and I'm not here to spar with you, but I did wanna respond to some of the things that you did say, and actually, we're not getting a fifteen thousand dollar raise, we're only asking for the two thousand.
No, you are.
We're asking for the thousand that we're included with...
No, you are.
And then the two thousand.
But you are, because you're getting, what, you know, it doesn't...
May I finish Judge, please?
Yes ma'am, go ahead.
And then, regarding Commissioner Benavides, I think you're right on point Commissioner, when you say that these judges have been receiving this, Judge Huarte has been receiving this supplement for twenty-three years, Judge Miguelia Lopez for eighteen years, and I have received this county supplement of fifteen thousand for fourteen years. And unfortunately, we all live within a budget, and this supplement that we receive from Cameron County is in my budget. And so when you decide that you wanna touch my budget, that's very personal. So, the other thing is that this is the year that we're giving a thousand dollars to every employee, and we'd like to be included in that, and even, even including the twelve thousand six hundred supplement to us from the general fund, we still have a surplus. We have a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus after we've given every employee a thousand dollars, and if you include us in there, even if you include the county court of law judges, you're talking at three thousand times eleven, that's thirty-three thousand, that still leaves you with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, in a year, when we have a surplus, there's no reason to say we're gonna take money from someone who's received the supplement for twenty-three years. And I cannot guess what the legislature will do, if they'll give us a raise in two years, as suggested by the county judge, but I will tell you that we can look at what they have done historically, and historically, they have not touched the judges' salaries until every eight to ten years. And so if we look at to what they've done in the past, we can predict what they'll do in the future. But of course, I'm not here to predict what the legislature would do, because if I did, and I had a crystal ball, then I'd get some lateral numbers out of it. Thank you for your time.
Let me, let me make a comment, Elia, before you leave the bed, leave the podium. This is my third budget, 'cause I basically relatively new at the county level, and I know the first two years it was pretty scary, because everything was red. I think everybody in this particular fiscal year worked very hard, everybody kinda held fiscal year worked very hard. Everybody kind of held the line, and we're actually in the positive. We're in the black for the first time in a long time, and actually pretty healthy for, you know, we're getting close to that 60-day surplus, which I think we're going to get even closer by October 1st. I, for one, cannot speak for anybody else because they're not here. I wish everybody was here so we could decide this right now, but they're not. And one on vacation, and one, I'm sure Dan's probably in court. Or, yeah, Dan's probably in court. That's usually where he's, when he can't make it here. But I think-
Well, with all the judges here, he's probably not.
That he's not? He's not in court?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, where's he at? Out of town? Chicago?
He's in Chicago at a seminar.
Hopefully, the weather's cooler there than here. I don't want to take, I don't want to see us have to take from what we've accumulated from anybody. I have no problem with the $1,000 raise across the board. I told the judge, I think everybody should get it. My only concern was the people that have received bumps during the year, for whatever reason. I have a little bit of a problem with them getting a thousand also because the regular rank and file out here, you know, they have, you know how it is. They worked very hard to get to this opportunity and only get a thousand when maybe one of their coworkers got bumped 3,000 plus another thousand. It's unfair. But I do believe that we're all, you know, in the same boat. We're all employees, even ourselves, even us. And that's why I did, I mentioned to the judge and Sophie that I believe that even the commissioner's court was entitled to the $1,000 raise, because normally, we're passed over also, just to set an example, because it's been so tight. So, when we have the entire commission here, I'm sure we, you know, the decision will be made, will be made in the best interest of Cameron County, and I would hope that you would respect that and let us-
I understand. We prefer to, because we like to rule. When lawyers come before us, we're used to saying granted or denied, and so we kind of like that. But we respect the fact that you want to wait for a full court.
And I think it's only fair, and here-
Not a problem, Commissioner.
I think it's only fair that we have a full court here. Now, you're looking at about, at least, what, three weeks? About three weeks we'll all be here.
Okay, very good. We'll be back.
Judge, and you are right about one thing.
Thank you.
Just one.
Just one thing?
Just a couple.
I started my day off right.
We do have an overage of $260,000. If we shut the farm down right now, we can adopt the budget. Everybody gets what they want. We stop it-
$280,000 is a lot of money.
No, there's no dispute that. It is a lot of money. We can do that if we do that right now. We stop it, we can adjourn, we're done. We can pass the budget today with no tax rate increase, a $260,000 surplus. Everybody gets their raises. But then what do I tell these folks back here? They're asking for more people, for more equipment, for more... See, that, no one is factoring that number in.
See, the difference is that they can come back next year. We can't. We're capped. Once you take us to the max cap-
Well, but they're not capping, but they're not, yes, ma'am, but look, I'm not done.
Go ahead.
They are not coming for salaries. They're coming for new personnel to patrol, to clean up, or whatever it is. That's what they're coming. And all I'm just trying to make a point to the general public that even though it sounds like we got a $260,000 surplus, we don't, because we haven't set aside money for jail overcrowding, we haven't set aside money for fund balance, we haven't set aside money for any other new positions. So, you're right. If we shut the budget down right now, we're done. But we haven't finished balancing the budget. We're not done. So, I appreciate you all being here, and I think everything is going to work out for the betterment of everybody. All right?
And I'm in support of everybody here. Good luck, everybody.
Okay, so who's next?
Judge, real quick, and not to discount what Judge Lopez said, but-
Okay. Oh, come on. Stay, okay.
But as the court mentioned, I wasn't, and my department's not asking for more money. They were not asking for more positions. All that was on the agenda today was asking for a reallocation of existing salaries in my department, which I think the court mentioned earlier that I had the discretion and the right to do, really, I suppose, any time of the year, but for convenience sake, I'm doing now at the preparation of the new budget period.
Do you all have any problem allowing him to do this?
What I don't understand is the linking of a budget-neutral reallocation of salaries in my office to a possible, potential $1,000 across-the-board salary increase. What does one exactly have to do with the other? If the court deems, or votes for a $1,000 cost of living adjustment, I think is what it's called, great. If you don't, great. But I viewed folks in my office as being underpaid, even when I began, and I viewed a position that's currently vacant as being overpaid. So, I'm trying to rectify that, but budget-neutral. So, I think, I wasn't sure how to make the connection where you had mentioned a possible option of folks that do receive a positive cost of living adjustment not being eligible or not receiving a $1,000 cost of living increase. If it's across the board, why isn't it across the board?
Yeah, that's why I don't think that that's going to happen. I think it's going to be logistically very, very difficult to come out and cherry pick who did, who didn't. I think that now is a time for you to make the adjustment within your salary schedule. I don't oppose giving the slots a $1,000 increase. I think that we have to pass a policy that we have to really look at every salary adjustment throughout the year through budget amendment. And I'm going to rely on the accounting staff to do that. I mean, I know you give us the budget amendments, but, and I've said this before, I think what you guys do, you, the auditor and the budget officer, you come in and you come to bat for every single department that makes a budget amendment request. And I think it should be up to that department to come in and go to bat for their department and not punt to you all to, you know, run interference for them. I think if it's important enough to place it on the agenda as a budget amendment, then that department head or elected official should be here and support that budget amendment and not rely on you all. So, I don't have any issue with you reallocating, and I don't have any issue with providing the $1,000 cola to every slot in the county at this point.
That's all I ask, is that you just consider linking $1,000 cost of living adjustment across the board.
You got it. I mean, for me, anyway. All right. Okay, let's see. This is Christmas. Come on up. Abel?
Yes, sir.
Or Sheriff, either one, I mean, they're all related, law enforcement.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Judge, I would like to enter this proposal here for the commissioner's court to consider. You know, we came out last time, we said we needed some dispatchers. I think the court said that they were looking into giving us maybe two dispatchers and one law enforcement officer. I'd like to review this with you all to see what you think about it. In other words, deputy salaries, this right then and there, and for the dispatchers, right around there. But we stated last time that we dispatched for several agencies. Well, I want to make sure that we were right in that, and we do go ahead and dispatch for 17 police agencies. And on that page that I showed you there, it shows the ones that we go ahead and dispatch, which nine of them are not related to the county's law enforcement. So, what I'm suggesting is if the court agrees with me, that we go ahead or the court sets a fee of $4,000 per agency so that we continue the dispatching service for them. That way, it gives about $36,000 and allows to hire an additional dispatcher.
That's a good idea.
I mean, I don't know how the court feels about that. We like to participate and help everybody, but sometimes some of these services, you know, are very difficult as far as that goes, Judge. We need the personnel out on the field. Let me tell you why. So, the other commissioners and you, Judge, we had what is known the border star. That program is being shut down as of next month. At the 30th of next month, I will lose five officers. Two of them are my K-9 officers, and two of them are from the interdiction that they work out on the streets. So, I wanted the court to consider to give me officers plus one dispatcher, and if you approve of this right here, we'll have the two dispatchers that I need.
Well, let me say that I think it's a good idea, Sheriff, on the $36,000. The unfortunate thing is, I don't know if we can book it without getting all these agencies, these cities to commit. They're all working on their budgets now, and $4,000 to these small communities is a lot of money. Have you reached out to them and asked them if they'd be willing to do that?
No, I wanted to bring it before your attention, before we do it, and then I can do that if they agree.
I think you do it right now. I mean, hopefully, we'll be able to do this before the budget clears up, because we can book the $36,000. And I really don't want to not provide for the dispatchers contingent on this, because I don't think this is going to happen. Okay? I don't think in total, you might have one or two, yeah, we'll give you 2,500 or whatever. And every little bit helps, but I just don't think we're going to be able to get all of this in time to balance the budget. But if you can, I think, try to do it, right?
I think every one of these communities should be notified-
Yeah, we'll go.
That we're going to be-
You said a thing about it.
If you want to continue to have services.
And I guess my question would be, Sheriff, let's say, you say there's nine of them. Eight of them say yes, and the other one says no. What will happen to them?
Well, I mean, we can leave with that. I mean, whatever little bit that can help to go ahead and be able to hire a dispatcher, you know, we'll try to find the money to go ahead, and whatever needs to be offset, we will do it. The point is, you know, we're here to help everybody, no question about it. And I agree with the judge, some of these departments don't have it. But if they were to hire their own dispatcher-
It would cost them a lot more.
-and if they were to get their own equipment, they could not afford to do that. All we're trying to do is to help them out.
Sheriff, what they're going to see it as is some of the people that preceded you is that, you know, we've been getting it, we've been getting it for these years, and we're entitled to it, et cetera, et cetera. And they're going to say the same thing. You know what? We've had dispatch services for years. Why should we start paying for it now? Because you're going to continue providing the service regardless whether this $36,000 comes in or not.
Absolutely.
Exactly. So, I think what they may tell you is, well, look, we don't have the money in our budget. It's a huge amount for us, and you've been doing it. You're going to have to do it anyway, so why should we give in to you?
Well, we hold, we talk to them-
But do it.
...but your consent. It's fine in the end. If you're not, well, it dies right here, Judge. I mean-
No, I don't disagree with you. I wouldn't count on it. So, I think we need to work with the budget without this $36,000. If it comes in, that's fine, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask them to go ahead and book the $36,000, because we're going to get it, because chances are that we probably won't.
This is just a, you know, this is just a-
Good idea, Sheriff. I'm more concerned about your grant money. I'm more concerned about how are we going to fill those five positions that he's losing?
Yes.
How are we going to do that? And that's what I'm saying. If we talk, and I wish I would have kind of hung around, but, you know, I don't think that you can look at this budget myopically and just, this department, we're going to take care of here without looking at the big picture. And this is the big picture. And so, I'm going to be, it's going to be interesting to see how members of the court are going to, you know, to balance this thing and try to give just the minimum of some of these, what these folks are needing. So, Sheriff, did you come up with a number of the five people somewhere? Did you give it to us?
No, I did not, Judge. I don't have the-
Roughly, is it going to be about 300,000, if I had to guess?
No.
Or more?
Forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars per-
I'm sorry, Gus, I couldn't hear you.
That would be forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars per officer.
Per, times five, plus, does that include fringe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so $230,000, roughly. Okay, that is, now, that's not, using the scenario earlier, that just wiped out our $260,000 surplus.
Right.
Right? And there's still six people in line for more.
I know that. I know that.
I know. I mean, it's just-
Well, it just led to most of that goes, you know? So, anyhow, well, thanks a lot for your-
Okay. You know, can you get that to Javier as soon as you can on the cost of the five? And you already have the cost of the dispatchers, correct?
Yes, sir.
You've got it in there. Okay.
Yeah, it, the, I'm sorry. I wasn't aware of the five, so it was on the request of the new positions where it had the-
Well, but that's not that.
No, no, this is completely different.
Right. So, on the new positions of the five deputies, that is exclusive of the five that are on this grant. So theoretically, you're asking for 10.
We would like to have more, but yes.
No, I know, but I mean, based on your request, it was five from the last time, and then five that you just learned were not going to be funded, so now that's 10-
That's 10, yeah.
-that you're asking for. Plus, so that's almost half a million, plus the dispatchers.
Plus the dispatchers.
Okay, all right.
The bottom line is, we're still short on deputies. I mean, it's still not enough deputies to cover Cameron County.
We'll be short about 40 deputies, thank you.
The problem continues regardless of how many we hire for you.
Well, but he's not asking for 40. He's asking for 10.
The issue is at some point-
Even if we choose to give him three, it's $130,000.
Yeah, and we have to figure out a way to do it. I think that's the problem, that's the point, you know? The people that live in the rural areas need to have the coverage. It's not just, you just do, people, I forget myself, you don't just do rural. You do a lot of other stuff besides just areas outside of Cameron County and, I mean, outside of the municipalities. And it's a big county now. It's gotten huge, and the population's growing, and populations are shifting, and I think it's important to try to figure, you know, to fill those needs. I think the small cities have to realize that at some time, it's not, this is not free service. You know, we charge taxes, we kept the tax rate. It couldn't be any lower anywhere in the world than it is in Cameron County. As big as we are and as low as our tax rate is, we're lucky to have the salaries we have now. I don't know sometimes how we do it, Sheriff, because we're so tight on the budget as far as, if we had the tax rate where it probably should be, you probably have the extra 15 deputies like you should. But since we're not going to do that, we need to work within our budget, and we'll do the best we can to help you.
Well, I would appreciate that as far as that goes. One other, on another note, which has probably nothing to do with this, we met twice with the company that wants to set up the SpaceX here, and strictly on law enforcement. And as far as I can tell, Judge, they're extremely happy with the way the sheriff's office has kept everything down, and as far as crime rate is concerned, as far as thefts are concerned, as far as burglaries are concerned, and as far as how we're patrolling around that area. We've met with them twice, and they even suggested that when they get ready to, that they want the sheriff's office to do the security work for them. So, we're willing to do that, and we spoke to them about it, just to let you know.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. And just on the tax rate note that you mentioned, that's very true. But also, keep in mind that not all counties have a bridge system that they've been able to rely on. And if it weren't for the bridge system, our tax rate would be much higher. And that's the issue that we've had over years, that we tend to depend on the bridge system to bail us out of a lot of things, much like, I don't want to get into that situation with a U.S. Marshals contract, where you're getting X amount of dollars, and we start relying on that money as a revenue stream, and we shouldn't rely on it as a revenue stream, because it can be cut off, as you know, at any time. So, but that's a good point. All right. Who's next?
Thank you, Commissioner, County Judge. I know we've addressed most of the, or some of the concerns about the court's security. Some of the judges have given you a little bit of input on what's going on, and they are correct. You know, sometimes we have two, three bailiffs that call in sick, and we have to take over their responsibilities. I only have, I'd like to remind you that I only have two officers per floor, and if I have two officers covering the two officers that did not show up to work, then that leaves me with no one to assist in cases where courts need suspects kept separate, or they have 15 prisoners, and they need additional security because one officer is not enough. Also, the other reason I'm asking for vehicles for these individuals is, and they don't have to be new, they can, we can borrow or beg or transfer from anywhere we can, is because in the afternoon, when a court slows down, and we don't have the demand for the officers in the courthouse, we can put them to increase revenue by collection of warrants.
Constable, on the latest list that I just got right now doesn't include the vehicles. I think if we're able to approve some people for you, we have to include the vehicle, but that comes under another, the equipment list, and we can factor that in. I think right now, the critical point is, how are we going to fund all or part of the $133,000 that you're asking?
That's correct. And what I've been doing is, for example, if one of my officers is in training or out sick, or he's going to be on vacation, what I'll do is I'll have him transfer his vehicle to other court staff.
You know, Abel, Constable, the question that I haven't asked, and I'll ask you, I guess, first, if the sheriff does not get the positions or any positions that he's asking for, how's he going to operate effectively? What's that going to do to the community that he's serving? I'll ask you the same question. If you do not get the two or three that you're asking for, how is it that you're going to continue serving the community?
It's pretty much impossible to do everything that-
But you're doing it.
...is demanded. Well, we're not.
Well, you're not doing it.
We're not doing it. I mean, we could definitely, our numbers increased. I'd like to remind the court that our numbers and collections increased 54% with just the little amount of time that we've been able to invest, that we have available, that we invest in the JP courts just to serve warrants. If I could get additional manpower, I could use them to continue the program and collect more funds that would supplement some of this money that's being spent, and maybe overall indirectly increase collections in total. But realistically, you know, the judges just say, we need four bailiffs because we have to have these subjects separate. And they don't, they don't consider that I have people in training, people in vacation, people sick, you know, other bailiffs are sick. They, I just have to shuffle people from wherever I got them. And what I've had to do up to date is, the three officers that I need for the field to serve, the process of the JP courts, I'm having to use them probably 60, 70% of the time to cover for the courts, because I don't have the manpower to do it, which throws off all the other schedules and creates all kinds of additional problems, because those other duties that they have have to be scheduled.
When you do evictions, and I know most of the time, those are usually scheduled, right?
Correct.
You have people out moving, and you know, you have to, you basically issue the order to remove them, and then you stay there while the people are removed.
Correct.
What happens if they call you to the court, or they say, hey, you know what? We need your man back in. What happens to-
We have to end up canceling the eviction, because we give priority to the court. And what happens then, we have customers who are basically paying for the sur- what happens then, we have customers who are basically paying for the service of the eviction that have to cancel the people that they employed to remove the property, then they have to reschedule, then we have to work around the other schedules that we have to reschedule them. But it's a total inconvenience for everybody.
Sure.
Thank you.
Judge? Next?
Thank you. The probation department was also here to say a few words. I know that, you know, we've been working with them...
It's a few words of condolences, or a few words of...
Trying to help them out, and I had spoken to him and see if, to try to see if there was any funds available on their side, but he told me there was not, that there's really anything, that there's nothing they can do to help with this problem, but...
I guess they were condolences.
What happened was about three months ago, the Sheriff's Department let me know that they will no longer be serving our warrants on wanted probationers, which normally, when a motion to revoke is filed, the next time the offender reports, we'd have them apprehended in our office. The Constable's Office, since they're next door to us in the courthouse, they just walk over and apprehend our folks for us. Now, I know it takes a lot on their end, we have fifty-three probation officers next door to the courthouse. Precinct Five was helping us out in our San Benito Harlingen office, but it got to be too much with gasoline going back and forth to Carizales. If it makes you feel any better, now when offenders report, we just have to say, hey, by the way, go turn yourself into the jail whenever. And as you may know, they don't show up, and now you have wanted sex offenders trolling the streets, and it's a community safety issue. Now, I understand, you know, the sheriff, he's spread too thin, Constable Precinct Five has spread too thin, and we're very fortunate that Constable Gomez has been able to, you know, continue supporting us at our main office. But, you know, and I'm, I did call our funding in the T.C. chat, we're not allowed to, you know, give money to the Constable's Office to provide us somebody. If we would, if we could do it, we would definitely look into that, but that's just another thing they're doing for us, in addition to all their courtroom evictions, everything else they have to do. And I've talked to also some personnel, I believe Carlos Garza, in the Sheriff's Department, and he's trying to look into ways to support us without the, with the limited staff coverage they have in the Sheriff's Department. So, I just wanted to throw that in there, too.
Thank you.
I think that gives you another glimpse of the deals, the issues that we have to deal with in our unique situation at the courthouse. And, you know, the only way that I was able to continue helping was, I managed to arrange that the Sheriff's Office would accept the prisoners at the courthouse, and I managed to arrange to where the probation office won't call anybody in in the morning when we're overbooked. So, we bring them in in the afternoon, but sometimes we pick up eight, ten prisoners in one day. And the picking up of the prisoners is the easy part, you just put them in the jail, but then you have to file reports and do the paperwork, and that ties up my officers. So, this is just another reason why we'd like your consideration to these new positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Renee Gonzalez, I'm the First Assistant DA. Mr. Sines was here this morning, but he was called away to receive a verdict in the Capitol murder case. So, we'd like to just present just a few facts in support of our budget request.
Specifically, Renee, you're talking about going from Fund Ninety to General Fund, right?
Correct.
You realize you're swimming uphill, right?
Judge, I do realize that the county has limited resources. We understand that completely, but really, this is more for the Commissioners to understand the situation that's going on in the DA's office, and perhaps this year, we might be able to, this coming year, we might be able to make it another year using Fund Nine Hundred, but that is drying up due to the change in administration. As you know, in the prior administration, we had a special operations group that was going out and seizing a lot of assets and reselling them, the eight liners and so forth. Mr. Sines has changed completely the way that's been being done now. Those machines are not being resold. That was a big percentage of our Fund Nine Hundred coming in. So, we've had some changes. The amount of work has not decreased at all, and so, there's a very real possibility we'll be able to make it through the next year without a problem, but beyond that, the Fund Nine Hundred has dried up in terms of new money coming in, and it will be in a crisis situation next year.
Renee, what you've just done is given the court an out.
I understand that.
Okay?
I understand that.
And I appreciate that, but it's something, it's three hundred and seven thousand dollars almost, that if we don't do it today, or even partly today, so it absorbs less next year, we're gonna defer all of it. Or if we can, do a part of it this year, and that's still a hundred and fifty thousand plus, and then try to do the rest of it next time.
Right, and I'm hopeful that's what we can do. We can do at least a part of it, so it won't be such a shock for next year. But it is gonna happen. The reality is, a year from now, if we're looking at cutting staff, there's gonna be all kinds of problems. Specifically, our greatest concern is in conjunction with our C.J.S. reporting, which as the court knows affects the grant funding for the county. If we go below ninety percent, this year, we worked diligently together with the County Clerk's Office, District Clerk's Office, Sheriff's Office, we were able to make it to ninety-one percent, but there are problems that requires a lot of manpower, not only from our office, from all those offices I've just mentioned, the Juvenile Department as well, but we had to dedicate several employees over the summer to bring that reporting up to ninety, over ninety percent. And that's a great concern, in addition to just holding on to employees. If we cut the Fund Nine Hundred supplements, we're gonna see just a tremendous turnover. So, but, I understand I've given the court an out, but I want this communication to be clear, so that next year, when we are in a crisis situation, the court understands that we did present this, y'all were aware, and hopefully you can help us out with at least some of what we've requested.
You know, you can only, you know, we've got two hundred and sixty thousand dollar surplus supposedly, and you only, it seems like everybody wants to tap that two hundred and sixty thousand like five or six times. What happened is that two hundred thousand dollars that we worked out with the DA's office a few years ago, is that in there?
It's not, but it's, that I know is off this year, so we have not included that.
So, in essence, we've already provided two hundred thousand dollars.
That's correct.
I mean, and I know...
The transfer has gone away.
Yeah, and I know it was before your time, but a few years ago, when we were, we were in a, I think Sophie, you remember, when we had, we had a really, really tight budget, we asked every department to cut X percent, including the DA's office, and at that time, the DA, rather than cutting, he contributed two hundred thousand dollars into the General Fund to avoid him having to cut the staff, and that was acceptable by the court. But it happened a couple of years, and so now it's going away, so in essence, your office is back to where it was pre-cut. So, we've already provided two hundred thousand dollars that, I know you're smiling, but really, in essence, that, I know that we can't hold future elected officials to that, but that is something that we are now out of, that we were counting on for the last three or four years. And it goes, what I said earlier, about reliance on revenue streams, you can't rely on those revenue streams. Just as an FYI, so, if that's not in there, we basically, just by default, provided two hundred thousand dollars back to the DA's office.
I understand that, and I...
You remember that?
I do remember that, and the payments have been made for, I think, five years, five years in a row now. We, obviously, we appreciate that, we'll work with that, that doesn't change the fact that we're still using a lot of money for Fund Nine Hundred.
How much do you have in your Nine Hundred account right now? What's your fund balance, do you know?
I'm sorry, Judge, what's that?
Yes, sir, the amount in your Fund Ninety fund balance, which is drug forfeiture fund?
As of July thirty-first, sir, it's one point two.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're estimating that our last quarterly payment to the county would be about a hundred and fifty, so that's gonna put us roughly at six hundred and thirty thousand for this current fiscal year.
Tell me again.
So far...
You're at one point two, and what now?
Year-to-date, quarterly payments paid back in expense, and expenses have been four eighty-nine.
Okay, what does that mean? Paid back in expenses?
I guess this are expenses that have been accrued onto Nine Hundred that we reimbursed the county back. So there's three installments, three payments, that we pay back our expenses.
Those are the expenses that are in fund in the DA's Nine Hundred, four seven five O, the DA's office, but if you remember, their trust funds are, their funds are held in trust in a separate account, and they're not in the generic Nine Hundred, so, we bill them, and they transfer the money into Nine Hundred to cover their expenses.
What does that have to do with paying the county? I mean, it's not a general fund issue.
That's the expenditure from March, nine hundred, for the year-to-date.
He saw you, that's how much you're spending.
You asked me how much we had in our fund balance.
Oh, I thought you mentioned...
It's one point two. Out of those one point two, we expect to pay a hundred and fifty as our last quarterly payment.
Okay, between August and September?
Correct.
Okay, I got you. I'm sorry, I inferred that it was General Fund, that you were somehow paying us something, I said, no, I didn't know about that.
We're talking about Fund Nine Hundred.
So, at the end of the fiscal year, you're gonna have about six hundred thousand left, so you...
At the end of the fiscal year, we're gonna have close to maybe one million, because right now we have one point two, and we paid four eighty-nine so far.
Okay, you mentioned six hundred thousand, so I don't know.
That's what we project as the entire expense, in combined, for the fourth quarter. So, yeah, we'll be at about one million.
Okay, you'll be about one million, and you can, so you can still fund this for at least another year, too.
And I think that's what Mr. Gonzalez said.
Off the top of your head, would you know how much in total Fund Ninety supplements you, and I know that...
Maybe, off the top of my head, sir, I'm gonna say maybe two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's it? The transfer, that's not, that's not...
Yeah, but it's gotta be, okay, this is, well, that's not what I'm reading here.
It was being requested from Fund Nine Hundred to One Hundred?
No, no, I know, but I'm saying, what does the DA's office currently pay out to all employees in Fund Ninety supplements?
That's it. That's what they're asking.
But this is only one Assistant DA and one staff, there's gotta be more people than that.
No, if you look, yeah, because I couldn't do it one by one by one by one. So, the total number of people, I don't...
Not the number of people.
That's the total.
Total dollar amount.
That's it. For Assistant DAs, it's a total of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in the fund for...
Well, but it can't be.
I'm sorry, that's the, I'm sorry.
It can't be that, it's gotta be more than that.
Yeah. Well, that's the portion that's being paid out of Fund Nine Hundred. It's a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars for Assistant DAs, that's supplements, it's not total salaries.
Okay, so you're saying there's only one Assistant DA?
No, no.
Okay, but that's what this says, so I'm just...
That's in total. In total, they're asking for a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars worth of Assistant DA supplements to be picked up.
I can see that, right.
And a hundred and twenty-five thousand worth of other staff.
I can see that. But what it says here is one Assistant DA and one staff. And I was asking, how many people?
Oh, how many people? I don't know. I didn't count those.
All right, okay, so the total Fund Ninety supplement is three hundred and six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. Got you. Okay. All right, thank you. Next?
Thank you.
There's just two of you. Can we continue? Okay.
They're going fast, man, like, what's...
Well, I just, I'm gonna be quick. I just wanted to let the court know that we implemented a fee system for the municipalities, and they, we've had a very positive relationship, at least I think on our end, because they have been paying for the work that we've been doing within their jurisdiction regarding animal control. We wanted to give some, we wanted to have some history behind us on some of the fees that were being collected before we approached the court, and we believe we're getting like thirty-six thousand dollars a year, and so, at the time when we made the presentation, we had said that hopefully the court would consider that possibly, that that could go into a future employee, and so that's kind of where we're at today. The court already knows we're not able to meet the needs of the public, and the public is adapting to that. We've had to reprioritize, and, you know, our priority is quarantines and dog bites, and that's, you know, health and safety comes first, and so, like I said, thirty-six thousand dollars is going into General Fund, but if some consideration could be given, that maybe that could be reallocated to the Environmental Health Program. On a side note, I'd also like to thank the court, and I know they're missing, but...
Well, the ones that counted here.
I'd like to thank the court. I know that the leadership, Gus, I know it's just Gus and Peter and Fidel that are here, but all the directors and myself were continually reminding the staff that we're very fortunate to have a Commissioners Court that does balance the budget, because there's big cities out there, and there are states that are declaring bankruptcy, and that's kind of scary. I don't know how employees are able to manage their budgets in that manner, so, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Javier. I think it's, here's what I'd like for you to provide to the court members, and then I'd like to get the recommendations from each court member, maybe not for the next time, but soon, on how we can balance this thing. But I want you to provide, I want you to start off with the summary. Now, let me ask you, the three hundred and eighty thousand, let's start with that number first, which goes back to eight-eight, that includes what number for the judiciary? Does that include...
As they, as they're currently being paid.
The full eighteen thousand, or just the fifteen thousand dollar supplement? Does that include also adding the fifteen thousand to the County Courts at Law?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, already includes everything with the exception of the three thousand dollar additional supplement?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Let's start off with that number, the three eighty thousand, one sixty-four. Then, what I'd like to see is, like you gave me earlier, give me the adjustment, the savings that just, I don't know if anybody's freaking out, I just wanna see what the numbers are, if we've provided the district, or the judiciary with the fifty-four hundred dollar supplement, and another item that we did with the nine thousand dollar supplement?
Okay.
Okay? Then, all the...
But starting out with the...
Yeah, you start off with, look, I mean, as evidence here, I thought that the animal control guy was in there already, it's not on there.
No.
But I think, I wanna see exactly what we've already, we kind of approved in spirit, but really haven't taken a vote on it, and I don't know if there's a consensus there, unless you all just wanna say, okay, we're okay with Mr. Rivera, we're okay with benefits, we're okay with all that, and maybe he can, you know...
So, you want me to back those out?
Do y'all wanna back them out, or are you still firm on the, on those?
We wanna give them to them.
At this point, we're firm.
Okay, so then we're at the two sixty...
Well, but when we say at this point, we're firm, exactly, exactly, so we were firm a week ago, and now we're not so firm. Well, maybe so, but until you vote for the whole budget, these things can change.
Okay.
So, my question is to you all, do y'all wanna keep those in there, or do you wanna highlight them out again in case you're having second thoughts about it?
I leave them for right now. But I have the, I wanna have the authorization to be able, if I wanna change my mind, I will.
Well, right, that's why I want him to, that's why I want him to outline them.
As of today, I'm firm.
Well...
But, you know, it could change.
Yeah, because...
That's right, it could change.
Yeah, because here's, here's what I need to do. This is, this is how it affects what I need to do, though.
Okay.
I have already added those positions and that budget into the system. So that's how I get these totals. So, and there's, I don't like going back and forth, because there's a chance of errors, just a key punch error. So if, if you want me to add them and approve them, they're here already.
Well, it's like, it's like on the-
So I can back them out, my total will change, and then I'll list them down here where you have the thousand dollars.
Yeah, but it is like on, but it's like on the judiciary amounts. You've got those in there, and that may change. We don't know where that's gonna be.
Well, based on the statute, as it is now, the fifteen thousand dollars-
Well, but I'm not-
-is approved from the county courts at law. So that's why it's there.
Yeah, but I was going by the supplement that is our option.
Right. And that-
That's fifteen thousand.
Correct. And that's already in there. But that's our option.
Correct.
Correct? And then you put in, and then you put in the fifty-some odd thousand. It is our option.
Well, ninety-six hundred dollars of it is.
The ninety-six hundred dollars is there?
Right. Not the fifteen.
Correct. So what do you have in there? The fifteen, or the-
Fifteen, as it is right now.
Right, you have everything in there, correct?
It's all in there.
All right. Okay, well, then if you, if y'all, if y'all were okay with the positions we've already approved, then we can leave it there, but as you said, right now, I said, well, I'm there now, but I might change.
I wanna observe the right to do this, because-
Okay, that's fine. That's why I wanted you to break it out.
I'm going to back them out, then.
Back them out and show them.
And then list them separately underneath.
Yeah.
Let me, let me, I have another question. One thing that I remember after last week's meeting, I remember that when we built the new office, the new annex in Los Frescos, we were going to, Commissioner Garza's asked about a clerk for the drive-up window. Is that clerk, the tax office clerk, was that Tony's, or is that, was that, is that-
No, that, that's strictly under the tax office, but it, it hadn't been requested prior to, two days ago.
Well, let me finish, because it's gonna-
It had not been requested, no.
Okay, 'cause I would, I would like to at least consider it. I mean, I'm not telling him to bring it on, but-
It's on the list now.
Give him the odd chance.
Well, that's, that's where, let me, let me finish my train of thought, or I'm gonna forget. When you do the three hundred and eighty, then over into the side, then you're going to do the positions that we've already-
Correct.
-semi-voted for. Then you're gonna come up with that subtotal of two hundred and sixty thousand.
Correct.
Okay. Then from there, you need to start adding the ones that were being requested in one sheet, so we can go one by one by one, which we're gonna do. You got sheriffs, you got the tax office position, everything that's in here-
It's on the other page, yeah.
Yeah. Because what I wanna do, I wanna, I want to see a, a comprehensive list, so I'm gonna start working on the budget, in terms of what I'm gonna recommend, and see if we can, and some people not gonna get it, some are, it just depends on where we are. And I'd like to get the same thing from you all, from everybody on the court. And so you include basically this list that you provided, then you, and I don't know if this list includes the one from the, the eighth, which includes the audit, for instance, Martha's, Martha's isn't in here.
No.
Her hundred and seventeen thousand is not in this list. So I want you to factor in, I guess, combine what we have not approved on this eight-eight list, and then add the new list that you gave us today as items.
Yeah, all of them.
All, yeah, we have to know how much money we're gonna have, and that way we can, I guess we can cherry pick which ones we wanna do. As far as the thousand dollar raises for all the, I think you leave all this stuff alone about who got what during the year, leave it alone. I think it's gonna be too complex, and then you, you, we just make a policy decision where we don't approve budget amendments when it comes to salaries without a true justification by the department head, not the Otter's Office, and not you. Okay? And then that'll give us a, a true comprehensive list of where we are as of today, in terms of people requests, and the dollars amount, and then you include the DA. I mean, he's asking for three hundred thousand to be transferred, you know, give us that amount, maybe we can do half, or a quarter, or nothing, I don't know.
Okay.
You follow that?
Just for clarification, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
The thing is, it's not gonna be three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, 'cause if, if you recall, there was, there was changes, which was the housing of inmates, the overtime, the TERS.
But that wasn't in the three eighty?
Yeah, it was.
No, because-
What I, what I'm seeing is-
'Cause I, I prefaced that last week.
No, 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 hold on.
That the TERS was incorrect.
On this three eighty, you've got housing of inmates below and all that.
Oh, was it? Okay.
Yeah, so what you do have, what you didn't have in the three eighty-
Was the TERS.
Was the TERS.
Correct.
Okay? So you may wanna do so as a point of reference, start off with the three eighty, and then throw a line item in there, TERS adjustment.
Okay.
So we know. And that one is, that one is not a, a, an amount for debate. Correct?
Well, right. Based on what we have right now.
As, as of, as of right now, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay? And that way, when you get that to the court members, then you all start kind of individually, start working on this stuff. But I wanna make sure that you throw the savings of, of what we could do by not doing the full complement of the supplement to the judiciary, and do it in nine thousand and fifty-four hundred.
And one thing that we, that we have not factored into the budget, as far as the revenue budget streaming, mainstream, is the admin fee that RMA is, is gonna be paying to Cameron County for the bond issuance. So we need to factor that in.
Well, how much is that gonna be? How much can it be? A dollar?
A hundred thousand.
Okay, well, factor it in, throw it in there.
We'll look at the, at the amortization, see, see what it is.
Okay. Factor it in there. I wanna make sure that by the time, the next meeting or meet after, that you've got a solid foundation for your revenue stream. Expenditures we can control, but on the revenue stream, okay? All right, anything else? Javier?
Uh, do you wanna-
And if you wanna help, just come by and see me, and I'll tell you what I'm looking for.
Okay. Do you want me to continue to provide the column with the seven hundred and fifty dollars across the board, or?
No, but what you may wanna do is, that's the only thing that changes.
It does.
Right?
Yeah.
From the seven fifty to the one thousand, what, what is that number? Two hundred thousand?
No, it's actually, uh-
Four hundred, almost three hundred?
Four hundred, yeah.
It's one point one six two to five five, one five? Whatever that difference is?
Yeah.
Just so we know that if we decide to go to the seven fifty, which I, I'm not gonna do that.
It's almost four hundred thousand.
Okay, so then, no?
I say a thousand.
All right, then, then you stay at the, at the thousand.
Okay.
And hope things don't change.
At this point. Salaries have not been set.
Yes.
Clarify.
What else?
I also listed on that handout, 'cause Commissioner Hernandez had asked for the vacant positions that have been vacant for more than three months. They're listed there. There's the webmaster position within the computer center, elections, but that's part of the restructuring that he's going to be doing within the tax office. There's a motor vehicle inspections investigator, that one's been vacant all year. The webmaster's been vacant all year. District courts interpreter, there was an issue with that, that they hadn't been able to fill that because of the pay. The maintenance department has a position that's been vacant more than three months, and the health department has a clinic coordinator that's been vacant for several months.
How many dollars is that?
Uh, well, in, I'd have to exclude, I guess, elections, since that one's going to be reclassified and filled.
About three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
But keep in mind as well, though, that-
But yeah, I know some of the department heads are here, and so they could address why it's been vacant for-
Well, whether we fill them or not-
I'm not asking for the amount, I'm not saying take them out, I'm just asking for the total.
No, but, but also-
I mean, for a whole year, they haven't been able to fill it?
I know the interpreter hasn't been filled, and the webmaster hasn't been filled. The motor vehicle inspections, I'm not, I don't recall.
I think, I think that before we, we start rushing into eliminating some of these spots that have been vacant for a significant amount of time, we use the lapped salaries from those positions to fund the housing of inmates. So if you eliminate that, then our lapped salary potential is gonna go down by some of that.
And I would venture to say that the interpreter position has been vacant all year, because the, what, the information I have heard from some of the judges is that at the rate of pay that the, that the county has set up, these interpreters can make more money freelancing and working on a contract basis. So that's why that position has been vacant.
Don't they also, I mean, the ones that we have still do freelancing, so I mean, it's like-
Yes.
They do.
Of course they do.
That webmaster position with the, the additional responsibilities with the Odyssey's, that we are looking to reclassify that position to a technician position, so that's why it's still, it's still vacant, we haven't filled it, but we're gonna reclassify that, to have an additional technician there.
Over at the very bottom of that analysis you're gonna give us, that page, maybe just put vacant positions, this one in the amount, and that we can pick and choose if the court wishes. I'd recommend just leaving them alone, 'cause we're gonna need, either that, or we're gonna set up money for the inmate housing.
Leave it alone. Right, leave it alone.
Okay.
This position, this is the, it's really a nurse practitioner position that we've had vacant, 'cause somebody retired, and so we were looking for somebody specifically in the Brownsville area, and the only person that we're really considering won't be able to be hired until October. And so we're still hoping to hire-
Is that for sure?
'Cause we only have one nurse practitioner at this point, and so that person has been going to all the clinics, but we would like to have one for the Harlingen and San Benito, and we did have, we did have two nurse practitioners for that area, and they would have to come to Brownsville. So now we're just trying to split it, where one stays in Harlingen and San Benito, and the other one stays in Brownsville, but we do have to wait.
Okay. Javier, the last thing on that analysis you're gonna make, make sure that you add in, aside from the personnel request, add the other stuff that we haven't talked about today, which was the housing of inmates, the three hundred and forty-three thousand, the, the request for the jail overtime of ninety-four thousand, and I guess the eight hundred and fourteen thousand to general fund, I think you can scratch that for now. Also, there's no money there allocated to replenish the, the reserve for legal fees that we, that we utilized this not too long ago. And I think we're gonna have to set something up, because we've got a lot of legal fees that we're incurring for SpaceX and GLO stuff that we have not budgeted. So we need to factor a number in for, for that. And I don't have any idea how much. But we may wanna consider going back and putting another hundred thousand into that legal.
Okay.
And we can work our way up or down, but I think for now, put in a hundred thousand, I think we're gonna spend that.
Could that be paid out of this budget, the one we're in right now?
No. Well, whenever we get billed.
Well, that's good, that's-
And that's gonna be billed next budget.
That's asking for a bill now.
I mean-
Get it out of the way.
Well, we're still gonna have to pay for it, and we don't have it budgeted, I mean-
Not budgeting for this year?
No, we didn't budget anything. That's why we were going into this reserve for, for legal fees.
Okay.
And then I think Bruce did have, you know, thirty-some odd thousand dollars for legal fees, but I think he's gonna get ready to zap that.
If y'all want to, me too, I can try to put a pencil to a projection for that, given history here. We also have legal fee expenses on that Tompkins case that are substantial.
And we have, you know what, can you get a, come up with a estimate and give that to Javier, he's gotta factor that in. I'm thinking it's gonna be at least a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I expect it'll be a little more than that, Judge.
Right, well, give him whatever number is, you think it is. Okay? All right. I don't have anything else on the budget for now, do y'all?
No.
Okay.
I, if we could talk about real quick, I don't know if you wanna discuss on the public works, or the, the reallocation within the positions?
Didn't we pass that already?
No. No.
I'm sorry.
Public works?
Can you give the-
It has mine, too, because everybody does.
On this page, can you give this to Commissioner Hernandez? He-
He stole my copy, and he says, says it's his.
Well, it had my name on top, so I don't, I figured it was mine.
Mine's right below yours.
Just give him-
Oh, that's a handout?
You know, I don't really need it, because you're gonna give me a summary anyway, I don't need it, that's fine. Yeah, you're gonna give him a summary anyway.
Okay.
That's why you were saying, what?
It has mine, too.
Yeah, they're all on there, that's-
I know, but he fell for it.
Yeah, it works, yeah.
Okay, that's where the vacant positions are, also.
Right.
On, on that same handout, the very last page, Commissioner, you had requested the information on possible jail expansion. These are preliminary numbers, what I've come up with. I still need to meet with the jail staff for some additional information, but just doing it strictly based on the, the number of inmates, and an estimated construction cost is, after speaking with Fondo Garcia, based on what it cost last time, and then this would be another year or two. You know, at a minimum, and, and depending on the actual way that the building is designed, 'cause that affects the, the actual staff.
Of course.
This is calculated just based on the number of inmates and the forty-eight to one ratio. You're looking at additional costs of four point five million dollars, and that includes an estimated cost on the debt service of one point five million dollars.
How many beds?
Uh, this is the, the three hundred.
Three hundred beds?
Yeah.
That's lower than we thought it would be.
And so that's, that's just, that's kinda like at a minimum, you know, it could probably be a little bit more than that.
Okay.
And then below that is, based on the current rate, what revenue that would generate if you were strictly housing US Marshal inmates there. And that's just for information purposes, 'cause it wouldn't affect this next year's budget, anyway. So did you want to, you address the road and bridge request now? No? Okay?
If you want to, you can, but-
I mean, it's up to you.
I mean, there's nothing in there that's, that's earth-shattering, I mean, that, that is what it is.
But not, not, as far as the reclassification and the increases that are being requested.
Okay, yes.
Okay, that, that, on the page where it had the salary increases, that's at the very bottom. And Arnold, your, your request on the public works?
Okay, I, I very recommend that you do have a budget.
Okay, but is this budget neutral?
It is budget neutral. It's a reclassification and salary increases-
Okay, but if, if we're gonna take the position that it's budget neutral, like we're doing with elections, then why would we not just wanna go ahead and do that if it's budget neutral?
Well, you are reducing your road administrator's salary from sixty-five thousand to fifty thousand.
But that's vacant.
It is vacant now, but as long as you're aware that that's what's going to happen.
You know, if it's vacant, if these are vacant positions, we're good.
It's from sixty-five to fifty?
Correct.
So Pete, do you want to move on it now, or...
Okay. Okay. Okay, the only other one that I would like, if the court could, uh, address this, is, right above that is the bail bond fund. There was a, a request, and I guess the bail bond board met and discussed it. Currently, the bail bond fund pays for one full-time position, a supplement to the bail bond administrator who is paid out of the general fund, and then two supplements to, to employees in the treasurer's office. This past year, the court approved an additional position for the treasurer's office. They're asking for that new employee to get the same amount of supplement that the other two are receiving, which is fifteen hundred dollars. But what I want to bring to the court's attention is, the bail bond fund, this next fiscal year, after this next fiscal year, they will not have funds to operate. They do not generate enough revenues to sustain the expenditures. The way they've been operating over the past several years is what they do generate, plus the fund balance that had accumulated. So after next fiscal year, they won't even be able to pay for the full-time position. So the court will have to decide at that time whether the general fund picks up all of these expenditures or to eliminate them.
At what point do we approve that?
It's part of, it's part of the budget.
This would only affect this coming budget?
Correct.
Weren't there some other requests in that deal, like Carl Allen's and stuff like that?
All I received was the supplement for the, uh...
And that's it?
Correct. I mean, they had asked for a thousand dollars for the, for the full-time position, but if the court approves across the board, a thousand dollars.
But wouldn't, what, why wouldn't this per, let me ask you, this, this person that's getting the additional fifteen hundred, wouldn't they be getting the thousand dollars anyway?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Out of the general fund, yes. It's a general fund position.
Okay, so this would give them a twenty-five hundred dollar?
In essence, yes.
Increase?
Yes.
Well, why do we want to do that?
I don't know, it's just a request that was made and presented to the court.
I mean, I don't have, obviously, if the slot pays a thousand, that's fine, but the supplement?
So, has the bail bond board approved the fifteen hundred?
Well, the bail bond board has no authority over the funds, the commissioner's court does. They made a recommendation, I mean, it was presented to them, they approved it amongst the board to do it.
They're okay with it if we approve?
They're okay with it, but the commissioner's court is the one who over...
Because it doesn't cost them anything.
Yeah, you're, you're in charge of the funds.
Yeah, it doesn't cost them anything.
Well, I guess, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem moving forward with it. But that person or the treasurer needs to understand that if, if the funds end next year, what are you going to do? I mean, if, if, if next year's budget were able to go ahead and, and fund it, that's fine. But...
Where do, where do those funds come from?
This is a, this is a supplement to, to the staff. And I think it's similar to what Elections Office said, that, you know, this, this is duties that they carry out. And we have to be, I mean, the staff has to be, their salary has to be competitive in that, you know, I don't want them then to find something else within the county or wherever and then, and leave. I mean, we have to be competitive in salary. It's just, it's a supplement, it had nothing to do with, with whether, because like you say, y'all have not agreed to any, any increases. Now, the other, the full-time position is not in my office. That's, that's something else.
No, I have no problem with, you know, they get the supplement every year, and they're going to get the bump. That's not a problem, because they've already been receiving that. But I would have a problem with if somebody's getting a raise and plus a supplement right now. And that would be my concern.
Right. Well, and, and, uh, the, the new person in the, in the office also works with, with the bail bond board, and she has not gotten the supplement, because she just started last year, and, and y'all didn't approve that.
That's your, your, your person?
Right.
Yeah, we have no problem, I have a problem with that.
Well, given that increase of the fifteen hundred, okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else on the budget?
So do you want to approve the supplement or not address it now?
You are going to put it on the, on the list, like all the other ones.
Aside from the, on the bail bond board, but, okay. Just, uh, we are scheduled to meet next week, um, fifteenth? Wednesday? Okay. Twenty-first, twenty-first, where the, you will set the compensation of elected officials' salaries at the first public hearing.
But that does not include the, I'm, I'm not going to support doing the judiciary until all the court members are here.
Well, they, they're, they do not fall within the grievance process.
Right, well, I know, but Judge Cornejo Lopez, something that they were, that they were employees, and I was like, yeah, you know, so I just, I don't know.
But they've never been included before, right?
Yeah, okay, that's fine. All right.
The meeting for the following week, Pete, will be on a Tuesday, I assume? Because we're all going to be, that's also a payroll, that's also a payroll week.
No.
Payroll is the following week.
Yeah, not next week, but the following, and we're all going to be gone.
Right. On the legislative conference, we were, we're going to do it Tuesday morning, and we got the okay from legal that we could approve claims and payroll based on estimated amount. And then the following meeting, we will ratify the real amount. Okay? All right.
We will continue meeting weekly until, until the budget settles, anyway.
Yes, sirree. Okay. Anything else on the budget?
Motion to acknowledge.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides to acknowledge the discussion. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. I've been asked to table items G and H. Item I, do I hear a motion to ta, oh, whoa.
Real quick, I should have done this earlier. Can we go to item Q, three Q, because that's related to three D?
Discussion and possible action on Cameron County Doom Protection Committee recommendation?
Yes, I believe we passed out an order that was prepared by Bruce. I believe Jim Allison also reviewed the order. The Doom Protection Committee met yesterday and approved the amendment. That's Exhibit A behind the order, and so I don't know if there's any questions. But this will be sent along with the MOA to GLO.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? By Commissioner Benavides?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, carries.
Does this finish our negotiation issue? Yes.
With GLO.
Okay, good.
Okay, and let me, uh, let me go back to, real quick, to claims. We have a, is that, is that it? Okay, do I hear a motion, she's presenting a claim? From the, is it from the payroll register? Is this it? Okay. A move by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides to approve the claim as just presented?
Yes, and let me just, uh, mention something on that. That particular claim, we've been contacted by the employee that that account has been closed. So we're going to verify that we can, that that account has been closed. And if it is found to be valid, that the account was closed, then we will withdraw the ACH file, resend it back again, and hence, this particular check will need to be released.
Okay. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to table items G and H? By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez to table. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item I, consideration of possible approval to initiate exploratory action for e-commerce. Wilson, is that yours?
Judge Commissioners, thank you. This is, just real quickly, this is just a request to initiate, looking for vendors for e-commerce. The historical commission would like to sell its logos, as well as donated artwork from, uh, from an artist, a local artist, specifically on, on the Civil War sesquicentennial. However, we could expand that out to do other items of interest. What we would be doing is selling the official CCHC logo on coffee cups. Anything that you could think of, we would be trying to promote that and promote interest in Cameron County. The, real quickly, any funds collected during, after approval would be going directly to the general fund. But again, this is just to initiate.
Move to approve.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Hernandez to approve. All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item J, consideration and action regarding the composition of the Cameron County Salary Grievance Committee. This is the one where we vote to appoint members of the public to listen to any grievances by any elected official regarding the compensation. So this one, we need a, a motion to what? Just to...
Don't they bring you the...
Has anybody...
Yeah, they got it.
Oh, they got it?
No, we don't know.
Has anybody agreed, or we do not?
We don't know yet. The process is that we, we...
I don't know that, why there's actually two agendas, because the very next one is the selection of the public members.
Right, this one is, we determine how we're going to do it.
Okay.
Okay, so this one will be, I need a motion to authorize the Salary Grievance Committee made up of, are they grand jury members? Or really, I guess, just make a motion of the general public... The grand jury members?
Prior.
Okay, grand jury members. Moved by Commissioner Benavides? Second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item K, consideration, selection of public members for the Cameron County Salary Grievance Committee. We will draw eighteen? Okay, we're going to draw eighteen members, and then the first nine will be selected. The other ones will be alternates in case they cannot serve. Yolanda Chapa, Brownsville. Yvette Garza, San Benito. Joe Keith Gutierrez, Brownsville. Daniel Davis, Harlingen. Rosalinda Medellin, Brownsville. Mary Lou Martinez, Brownsville. Maria Elena Juarez Dunn, LaFeria. William Peterson, Harlingen. Maria Adriana Salas, Harlingen. Annabelle Ramirez, Brownsville. Aida Guerra, Harlingen. Laura Rocha, Brownsville. Joelle David Betancourt, Brownsville. Diana Hare, Harlingen. How many is that? Maribel Garza, Riojando. Nancy Garza, Brownsville. Maria Teresita Cantu, Harlingen. Basilia Medina, Brownsville. That's eighteen? Okay. Those members will be contacted, and the first nine that we selected, that they can serve, will be serving.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides to approve the members that were selected. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item L, consideration and authorization of a public hearing for the order amending and updating the Cameron County Building Regulations required, required by the National Flood Insurance. Do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. We're in a public hearing.
Judge and Commissioners, I've been working with Hernandez, I know he's Benavides, to update and make any changes necessary to these building regulations. They were initially adopted in nineteen ninety-four, and so they're, they're, they're old. They need to be changed a little bit. And what we've done is, there's only really two main substantive changes that we've made. The rest of the changes that were made were more grammatical, fixing grammatical errors and, and, and some spelling and stuff. But the first change, you would find on page fourteen, it's Article two point zero two. And basically, what that does is actually identifies the areas that would be considered flood-prone areas in Cameron County. So it, it refers to a flood insurance study that was done for Cameron County showing the areas that would be more flood-prone, and also refers to the FEMA map. So we've adopted those maps as showing the areas in Cameron County that would be, you know, subject to the flood, you know, flood-prone areas. The other major change that was done was increasing the permit fees. And I can, you would find that on page seventeen. And I can go through each one and, and tell you what the fees were and what they're being changed to. The first one is, if you're going to get a permit for brick veneer or masonry construction, it used to be thirty-five dollars, we're recommending forty-six dollars. Wood frame siding was thirty dollars, it's going up to forty-two dollars. Wood frame siding with pad and piers was twenty-seven, it's now going up to thirty-eight. Garages was fifteen, going up to twenty-one.
Where was that last one?
I'm sorry?
Where was the last one? The one that went up to twenty-one?
Uh, garages, they were fifteen dollars, now the fee's going up to twenty-one dollars. Roof carports or patios were eight dollars, now they're going up to fifteen dollars. Commercial construction would be forty-eight dollars per square foot. And, um, electrical permits would be fifty, going from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars. Gas or water meter inspections going from twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars. Rein inspection fees would be increased from twenty-five dollars to seventy-five dollars. And that would be the major changes to the building regulations. The rest, again, would be, you know, they were grammatical and, and spelling errors that needed to be fixed.
Any comment from the public?
A motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides to close public hearing. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item M, deliberation and possible approval of order amending and updating the Cameron County Building Regulations required by the National Flood Insurance. Do I hear a motion to approve? My Commissioner Benavides. Second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. Item N, consideration and authorization to hold a public hearing for the purpose of closing and abandoning of a portion of Ramelio's Avenue and a portion of Joanna Street. Said roads are located in Precinct One and Spanish Dagger subdivision, section two. Do I hear a motion to open public hearings? Moved by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, carries. We're in a public hearing. Who from the public is here to address that? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Too late. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item O, consideration and authorization to adopt an order authorizing the closing and abandoning of a portion of Ramelio's Avenue and a portion of Joanna Street. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item P, discussion, well, we're going to take item P after executive session. Item Q has been discussed. Presentation, resolutions, and proclamations. Adoption and then presentation or proclamation honoring Mr. Mario Jorge. Is Mario here? I don't see him. Okay, do I hear a motion to, uh...
Adopt.
To adopt? My Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. Item B has been done. Item C, presentation by the Department of Interior's US Parks and Wildlife Service? Do I hear a motion to table? My Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed, item carries. We have one item that we're going to discuss after executive session, that was item P regarding property. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez, all in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed? We are in executive session. Item A will be, item A, we don't need to discuss, it will be tabled. Item F, no need to discuss, it will be tabled. Item B, confer with legal counsel regarding property pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero seven-two and five-five-one point zero seven-one-two. Item C, litigation, Larry Mark Polsky versus Cameron County and others pursuant to Code Section five-five-one point zero seven-one, one A. Same thing with item D, same code section. Item E, same code section.